He's the go-to guy. And he, last year, he gave a presentation to Franklin. Just, he talks in here about a city of Fremont, I think it is, but it's actually Franklin. So, we don't currently have a parkland dedication ordinance. So, I thought it would be good that the planning commission members get a handle on, on the dedication ordinance, what it does. So, when you're looking at plans, you're not just looking at open space that developers are offering. There's, there's a gamut of, a level of knowledge that you can gain from this in conjunction with the future impact fees, because the impact fees are, is a separate entity by itself. So, with that, Nick, if you'll start the video.
I'm Steve Fritz, a landscape architect with Barge Wagner-Sunderen-Kanon and my firm's principal in charge and project manager for the comprehensive planning study. We're very fortunate to have with us Dr. John Crompton this afternoon, this morning. For those of you that were at the mayor's breakfast this morning, I think you saw the, the dynamic speaking style and, and the knowledge that Dr. Crompton shared. You can see his credentials and I'd spend most of the time reading them if I was going to do that, but he's very accomplished. But he told me one thing this morning that I was very impressed with, that he is the most cited researcher in the fields of parks and recreation and tourism in the world, which I found to be pretty darn impressive. So, we're very pleased to have him here today, particularly to talk about the, the topic on parkland dedication that we know is a, is an issue here in this community. It will be a, something that will be addressed in our comprehensive parking recreation master plan. Dr. Crompton is not a foreigner to this subject. He did a study a few years ago, looking at all the parkland dedication ordinances in the state of Texas to see, there was forty-some of them that he looked at. So, this has been a topic of research for him for quite some time, and I think he brings a lot of knowledge and experience to this topic that will be very beneficial to, to this study and Franklin as a whole. So, with that, I'll introduce Dr. Crompton.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Well, thank you for the warm welcome and thank you for inviting me to Findlay. Three things I guess I would give by way of background before I go into those. For me, this is a listening session and after presenting some basic ideas and some thoughts about park dedication exactions, the intent is to gain reaction from yours to the ways that we proceed. There are sort of three things I'd bring to you. The first is, as Steve indicated, I've spent quite a bit of my time studying the issue of park dedication, so hopefully bring a few professional insights to the table. I live in the city of College Station, which is highly analogous to your community of Franklin in the sense that for the last twenty years, every year, we have built five, at least 500 dwelling units. That means fifteen hundred to two thousand people coming into our town every year for the past twenty years. Last year, we built 740 dwelling units. So, it's a very rapid growing community. And third, I guess some of us, don't take this personally, Mike, but some of us get a little dumber, just some of us, as we get older. And, and so I got myself elected to the city council a few years ago and, and so I had a number of, a number of years on city council and was the mayor pro tempore of my city. And so during that time, there were a couple of times when we redid the dedication ordinance and visited with stakeholders and interactions and all of that process that you are now going through. So, I have sort of a political background with that as well. So, as this group probably is aware, there's nothing new about parkland dedications. The first ones in this country were launched over a hundred years ago, but they really became of age in the fifties and sixties. The first ones really came into being the modern era and they took off in the seventies, late seventies, when the tax revolt hit in and cities were looking to load shed, were looking to shift what had primarily been exclusively a city responsibility over to the private sector. And that happened in the beginning of the tax revolt and has accelerated since that period of time. So, as this group is well aware, it's a type of user fee. The principle is that new development generates a need for additional park amenities and the people responsible for creating that need should bear the cost of providing the new amenities. In essence, a user fee. The reason that we need more parks or more developed, intensive development of existing parks or renovation of existing parks is because there's more demand. And so, that demand should pay for those parks is the principle. And it leads to the political imperative, and let me speak to this right at the beginning, in our own council, which is very much a, a business-friendly community and prides itself on that. We figured out there are three options for paying for growth, for handling growth. The first one is that, well, before I put those options up, one option is you do nothing, that you don't create any new parks. That effectively means you're lowering the quality of life in the area. The second option is that you put it on a bondage, a referendum, and that means existing residents pay for the development. If you don't do anything, you, you lower the level of service quality. And as one of my colleagues on the council said, none of us on this council were elected on a platform of reducing service quality or of raising taxes. That isn't what we ran on. So, the third alternative is that new growth should pay for itself. And so, when you talk about keeping taxes low and every one of us who ran for city council in my city, and I suspect it's similarly here, ran on a platform of fiscal conservatism, that we would keep taxes low. And the way you do that is you attack it on the front end. If you're going to keep taxes low, there's some things you can do about government. You can use technology to keep things low and induce more efficiencies. You can outsource stuff which will induce more efficiencies, but at some point, you're limited. And the way you really keep taxes low is by adopting the mantra of those who benefit from services should pay for them. And so, that really is, from my perspective and on our council's perspective, the bedrock philosophy of fiscal conservatism, that those who benefit from services should pay for them, which is why parkland dedication came to the forefront in our own community. I want to upfront, be sure that we all understand the different sources of exactions. Exactions, as you probably well know, come from two sources. On the left-hand side here, we have the police power, which is parkland dedication, which is what I'm going to be talking about, which, which, the authorization for that comes under promoting the health, safety, welfare of residents. Now, then there are impact fees, which is a different phenomenon, and for that, there needs to be legislative enabling authority. There are twenty-nine states in the country who have impact fee legislation, enabling legislation, and in twenty-four of those twenty-nine states, recreation is part of that enabling legislation and they can levy impact fees for recreation. Interestingly, Tennessee doesn't count under those twenty-nine states, even though you have essentially the same thing with your facilities tax. But it, but it, because it's not generic and as I understand it, you have to apply for a special bill or something as a city, it doesn't count as one of the twenty-nine, but in essence, you are. So, I want to make clear today, ladies and gentlemen, that I'm only talking about the left-hand side here, that the right-hand side facilities tax is outside my frame of reference today. I'm only talking about the parkland dedication on the left side under the police power. So, impact fees, as I said, need state legislative authority. It's much broader than parkland and that's important, that parkland dedication fees are really limited to the basic infrastructure of parks. You cannot, under the present state of, of the law, and let me say, the law, the courts don't rule what you can do, they simply rule what you can't do and you have to interpret from what you can't do, what you can do. And so, the law says that you really can't put, use parkland dedication money for major facilities. If you're talking about ballfields and swimming pools and recreation centers, you're on the right-hand side of that diagram, you're talking about impact fees. They are much broader in their use. If you're talking about the police power, health, safety, welfare, you are confined to the basic infrastructure of parks. That doesn't mean just the land, it means the infrastructure that goes with it, as we shall see. Typically, impact fees are collected at the building permit stage where, as you know, dedication fees are collected, the platting stage. One, one exception with, as again, I suspect you're very aware of, at the platting stage for dedication fees is apartments, because many times at the platting stage, you don't know how many units there will be in an apartment project. And so, sometimes apartment dedication fees are postponed until the building stage where single-family homes are taken at the platting stage. And so, the two, the parkland dedication and the impact fees are complementary, they do not overlap, they are complementary sources of funds. So, as I said, these first ordinances came into being in the modern era in the fifties and sixties, and they were limited to neighborhood park dedication. And so, it was land dedication only in the early years of the fifties and sixties. And as a result of that, there were very small fragmented pieces of land associated with these developments. So, you get quarter of an acre or half of an acre donated as part of this thing. And typically, it would be the land that was no good for development. I mean, you give them the drainage ditches or whatever, and in some cases, that's fine for a park, but in others, it wasn't. But it was clearly unsatisfactory, particularly from an O and M point of view, Operation Immense point of view, to have all of these little tiny bits all over the place. And so, rather quickly after that, in the sixties and seventies, there became an option, the fee-in lieu option emerged for neighborhood parkland dedication. And so, instead of, as you well know, donating the land, you could now develop a fee to go instead of the land, and that was collected at the option of the, of the city. So, if they didn't like the land, then they could take the fee in its place. In my own city of Texas, which was the last, Texas was the last state to get, to resolve the whole Fifth Amendment issue. You will recall in the early days, there was concern that parkland dedication constituted an illegal taking under the Fifth Amendment. All the states had resolved that issue by 1984, except Texas. And my own city of College Station happened to be the case which was taken to court, the Texas Supreme Court in, in eighty-four, and, and the court approved that under the police powers, it did have that authority. So, that issue about being a taking was resolved by the courts thirty years ago, and it's, it's no longer about that. But importantly, the court stated, there must be a reasonable connection between the increased population arising from the subdivision development and increased park and recreation needs in the neighborhood. This whole notion of there being a nexus between both the extent of the donation, of the dedication and its physical location. Various states had various things in there, and so it finished up at the U.S. Supreme Court and in the Nolan versus California Coastal Commission in 1987. This was the first of the two key Supreme Court cases. This reaffirmed the rational nexus clause, there needed to be therefore dedication zones. So, in a city the size of Findlay, you have to have dedication zones. It is not, there is no nexus if you're requiring a subdivision over here to pay for something and you build the subdivision of the other end of Findlay, there is no nexus and, and you're not allowed to do that. You have to, if you're, those people who pay the price, pay the dedication fee, have to benefit from the park, there has to be a nexus close to them. There must be a geographical nexus established. And that means the city government has to establish a series of separate funds. So, those dedication funds go into the particular zones where that nexus is, to the neighborhood park and to the community park. And so, this is a typical sort of land dedication you see in the audience. I used my own city of College Station for this purpose, where I drafted the ordinance. Parkland fees will be deposited in a fund referenced to the park zone or community park district involved. Funds deposited into a particular park zone fund or community park district may only be expended for land or improvements in that zone or district. And that's the typical kind of language now that you will find in these kinds of ordinances. The next Supreme Court and the one which has most impact on us, well, it came in 1994, which was the Dolan versus Tigert case, where the court established, there must be a, and this was their phrase, rough proportionality between the requirements imposed on the development and the needs for park use projected to be forthcoming from the development. And so, whereas the Nolan case established the geographical nexus, there had to be zones, the Dolan case says, and the amount required from the ordinance that a city can require has to, has to spring from the demand that is being placed on it. There has to be a, a demand-supply nexus as well as a geographical location. And the court went on, and I quote from the ruling, "No precise mathematical calculation is required, but the city must make some sort of individualized determination that the required dedication is related both in nature and extent to the impact of the proposed development." And so, the emphasis now has shifted in two ways by this ruling. The first way is that before this ruling, the emphasis was on the developer to prove that the city's ordinance was inappropriate. That game changed with this ruling. Now, it says very clearly, the city must make some sort of determination. The city has to justify to the development community that it is, that dedication is appropriate. So, now the city has to be proactive in developing that instead of reactive. The emphasis now moves to the city. And so, so that's, that's the first key factor, is the change in responsibility for making the case. The second key factor is the rough proportionality. There's got to be a mix, there's got to be a way of establishing the demand or the dedication is appropriate and matches the demand being placed on the parks. So, the tech, Dolan case has been typically, this is typical language from the, from the Dolan case, "The developer's portion of the costs may not exceed the amount required for infrastructure improvements that are roughly proportionate to the same, to the proposed development." So, the city's got to demonstrate that there is a rough proportionality and that the developer is not being required to pay more than is required. What this does is it takes away all kinds of arbitrary stuff. You can't suddenly, I mean, the old days, you had master plans which said, "We're going to produce parks at ten, ten acres per thousand people and, and that will be our standard for the developers." Nope. You've got to have some rationale for that number. Just because you put it in a master plan doesn't give you a rationale. You've got to have a basis for calculating that number accurately. So, prior, so let me just reiterate this. Prior to the Dolan case, developers challenging a community's park dedication ordinance had to prove it was unfair. The Dolan decision shifted the burden of proof to communities. So, now, Findlay must justify that the ordinance is fair. The burden of proof of legitimacy of rough proportionality is on the city. Rough proportionality is operationalized as a city's current level of service. The only way you can do this is to say, people moved into this city because they wanted its value system. And therefore, the current level of service represents the most, is the best representation of the probable demand for that service by new people. And so, given that's the only way you can proactively estimate what that demand is, the onus on the city is to work out what's the current level of demand, of level of service, and to apply that to the dedication ordinance. None of this arbitrary five acres, eight acres, ten acres, or whatever, there's a calculative way of getting at this. So, it must be individualized, as I said, it can't be an arbitrary amount imposed simply because it's comparable to another city. You can't say, "Well, these six cities have that level, so we should have that level." Don't work. It's individualized to your community on the level of service in your community. That's what individualized means. You can't, as I said earlier, request disproportionate amounts from developers. If you've got a level of service now which works out, let me pick an arbitrary number, eight acres per thousand people, you can't in this ordinance put anything high on that. You have to keep it at the most, the level of service you currently operate at. And you have to accommodate different densities of development when you do this, because the, as we shall see, the standard depends on the number of people in the area and those number of people vary by density of development. So, there is now, over the, since Dolan, some other things have come on in, it's now accepted that in addition to providing land, the dedication ordinance should include improvements on the neighborhood parkland. And that means infrastructure improvements, not, not superstructure stuff, but infrastructure costs can go into the dedication ordinance. It's more of the city's effort to transfer costs to the user benefit principle. In the old days, you would get pieces of land which would sit there for ten years and nobody'd do anything because the city didn't have any money to make them into a park. Those days are gone now. That development money is built in, that infrastructure money is built in, can be built in to the, to the exaction ordinance. Takes it further. It used to be just the neighborhood parks, now you can put it on all parks. Now, in my own community, the elected officials decided that it would be just community parks and neighborhood parks, and we, we do have actually a, a large regional park and for whatever reason, the city council said, "We're not going to include that." So, in our community, we have neighborhood parks, we have community parks, and we have a fee geared to each, as we shall see in a moment. And then, basic improvements for those community parks, just infrastructure improvements, not only kind of facilities on them, just infrastructure improvements. So, you can see what's happening here is, and over the years, there has been more movement to move it away from the taxpayer towards newcomers coming in. And in my own council, a gentleman on my council coined the phrase, "We are not going to be in newcomer welfare. We're not going to be supporting newcomers here with taxpayers' money," which was the political perspective that in my community, which was what they adopted. Some people say, "Well, what about non-residential? Can you go beyond houses and build in the commercial stuff and things?" The answer to that is no, you can't, because commercial developments do not generate a demand. I mean, people, when they go to commercial developments, they, they work and they don't get playtime in the middle of the afternoon to go play in the parks, they work. So, those developments do not generate park demand, and so you cannot. Having said that, some cities do anyway, and this is one, this particular city in Texas does, it recognizes they shouldn't, but they do it anyway. Although non-residential development does not generate residential occupancy per se, it does create environmental impacts which may negatively affect the living environment of the community. These impacts may be ameliorated or eliminated by providing park or open space areas which buffer adjoining time users, prevent undue concentration of paved areas, allow for the reasonable dissipation of automobile exhaust fumes, provide natural buffers and, and do all kinds of good things. No matter how hard they justify it, they can't, and if it was challenged, they would lose. And of course, you can do all of this stuff here, you know, you can do this with buffer zones, you don't need a dedication ordinance for buffer zones, and you can do that with irregular zoning ordinances, you can accomplish the same deal. So, you cannot apply it to non-residential situations. Here's another city, "The city has therefore determined non-residential developments must provide dedicated..." Well, they can't. Well, let's move on. So, when you calculate the dedication ordinance, you're really looking at one of the first two, a land requirement or, instead of that, a fee-in lieu alternative, and you calculate an exaction fee based on that level of service. And then, you're looking at park development fee, which you calculate based upon the infrastructure costs associated with the park development. So, this is what my own community of College Station, the current level of service is one acre per two seventy-six people. What I did was I took the city's population to get that number, did it by the number of neighborhood park acreage, put the acreage into the population, and the number came up, one acre for every two hundred and seventy-six people. Now, the Census Bureau tell me that in single-family homes, we have 2.8 people per household in my community for single-family homes. So, if I take my two seventy-six people and divide it by the 2.80, then I've got ninety-eight dwelling units. And so, what that tells me is, my standard in College Station is that I've got, for every ninety-eight dwelling units, I should provide one acre of park land for the land So, one acre costs $24,000 to purchase in my community, so divided by the twenty-eight, ninety-eight dwelling units, it means there's a fee for the land of $245 per dwelling unit. Now, I've got the park development. The cost of improvements, the infrastructure improvements, and I'll share with you the list in a moment, was 516. We base that upon the infrastructure improvements that went into the park and the current pricing of each of them to come up with this amount. And we looked at how many people a neighborhood park served on average, and we worked out it costs $234 per person when you put the, this into that, and you apply that, multiply that by the people in a household, single-family household, and you come up to $655 per dwelling unit. So, for neighborhood parks in my community, it was established that the land fees, $245, development fee was $655, the total fee was $900. Now, let me say, this is what the current level of service provides. Now, as I said at the beginning, at the end of the day, it's a political decision whether the elected officials elect to put it at this level or whatever, but they can't go higher than this. And so, this is my neighborhood park, and I won't go all the way through this, but it lays out all of the infrastructure elements that go into our neighborhood parks with a price on there which gives us the number at the end. And what happens in the ordinance is, you attach these numbers as an appendix to the ordinance, and one of the, and then you put in the ordinance that the ordinance should be reviewed every typically three years. And three years, the city council and its staff look at these numbers and see if they're still appropriate or they alter them appropriately. One of the limitations on many ordinances is they do not have a review in there, they don't have a time review period in there, and so this stuff never gets looked at. I haven't taken you through the community park element, but a similar formula goes through. We work out the land and the infrastructure and we come in with community parks. Now, a community park zone, by definition, will be bigger than a neighborhood park zone. I don't know what, what the consultants here have figured out is the level of, is the radius of a neighborhood park and what a community park is, but those radius will dictate how big your zones can be to meet that nexus principle as we go on through. Let's talk for a moment about credit for private amenities. Let's talk for a moment about credit for private amenities. Many ordinances do not do that, and they must. Under Dolan, under the Dolan legislation, they must give credit for that. Typically, this is what you get. "Up to fifty percent of the park dedication requirement may, the discretion of the city, be fulfilled by privately owned and maintained park and recreation facilities. Credit for private parkland must meet the standards of the Parkland Dedication Guidelines concerning adequate size, character, and location." That is not satisfactory. It is much too arbitrary. It gives the city, can come up with any number between zero and fifty in that. And that doesn't work. The city staff here at Finley showed me a proposed revision to their existing ordinance where in the end they had put in the right way to do it, which was, "How much cost has a developer incurred in putting in the private amenities?" One side of the legislature. "How much fee should he be paying or she be paying for the parkland dedication ordinance?" That side. Well, take the amount they've put in from the cost, from the amount they would pay, and they pay the balance. I mean, that's the way that it should operate. Now, you may have a contingency in there of saying, "Well, up to eighty percent perhaps." But you've got to leave some for public access, public open space. Otherwise, it becomes exclusively private. But that's the way to do it, is to have a concrete formula that the developer's costs are taken out of what the fee would have been, and the balance then becomes the fee. If it's higher than fifty percent, it must be accessible to the general public. That's why I said you need to probably keep some points in there. And we've talked about that, so move on. Yeah. One of the challenges with this process is, so you do the development, and you collect the fees in your zone, and you're ready to buy the land. But meanwhile, the land price has gone through the roof. And if there's any land left in that area, you can't do it. The way to handle that is to go to your voters in a referendum, a bond referendum, and say, "Please grant us a revolving fund worth probably two or three million bucks," is probably the right number. And for the city to go out in what it perceives to be the growth areas and acquire the parkland in advance of need with that revolving fund referendum money. And as the dedication fees come in, you reimburse the revolving fund. That's the only way you're going to make this work in the long term. And as you well know, when you go back and try to retrofit parks after development has taken place, it's enormously expensive to do that. It is much better to get out there in front. In addition, from the developer's point of view, they see where the parkland's going to be if you buy them up early. And that, of course, enhances the value of the land around those facilities for the developer. There must be a time limit for spending the fee. You can't just take a park under Dolan, you can't just take the parkland and sit on it for fifteen years and do nothing. You can't take the dedication, sit on it, do nothing. You have to expend it. So the question becomes, what is a reasonable timeframe? Well, it depends obviously on the growth rate of your city as to how fast you acquire the funds. In Finley's situation, my recommendation would probably be about eight years. I think five is too low, ten is probably too many. I think you're growing at a rate, by my back-of-the-envelope calculations, you're looking at probably about eight years or so, within which that money must have been spent. And if it has not been spent, then the developer can reclaim those funds. And that should be written into the ordinance. So this is typical refund wording in the ordinance. "Funds shall be considered to be spent on a first-in, first-out basis in the zone account. If not so expended, the landowners of the property on the expiration of such period should be entitled to a pro rata fund of such sum computed on a square footage of area basis. The owners of such property must request such refund within one year. Entitlement in writing or such right shall be barred." What about floodplain land? Can you include that in the ordinance? It varies from city to city. Typically, there's a ratio put in. So there's usually a limitation that no more than fifty percent of the area you're dedicating can be floodplain land. And in terms of the amount of floodplain, ratio of two to one or three to one. In my community, it's three to one. For every three acres you give a floodplain, it equates to one acre in the dedication. So there's a ratio in there. So that says, yes, you can do some, but you can't dump all the floodplain into your dedication requirement. What about detention basins? I don't know if you have those in Finley. In my own community in College Station, we made a decision, we're not accepting any detention basins. They're just not acceptable from a recreational and park use point of view. Other cities, San Antonio, for example, they've got this. "Detention basins, which are required as part of the stormwater management standards, shall not qualify as parkland unless seventy-five percent or more of the active and usable area is designed for recreational use and the areas conform to the requirements below. Detention areas shall not be inundated so as to be unusable for their designated recreational purposes. They must be designed to drain within twenty-four hours, constructive natural materials, and so on and so forth." So there's a political decision to be made, what you do with detention basins, but it has to be addressed in the ordinance. Who pays for parkland dedication? It is argued that new homeowners pay for it. If a two thousand dollar exaction is imposed, parkland dedication fee, there are four possible options. Number one, homeowners pay more. Two hundred thousand dollar home is priced at two hundred and two thousand. You pass it through to the homeowner. Number two, and three, is you gauge in this, or number two, homeowners get less space. So instead of two thousand square feet at a hundred dollars a foot, they get nineteen eighty square foot. So they get less space. Or you engage in what you all call the value engineering, and you know that term better than I do. What actually happens is none of those things occur. This is what occurs most of the time. Now, I say none of those things occur predicated on the development community being given a long lead time before you introduce a new ordinance. Because if they already own the land, then of course, they're caught in the middle. But what mainly happens is it gets passed back to the land seller who gets a lower price for the land. So let's assume you've got an exaction of a thousand dollars. And before the exaction, you sold a hundred units, or your game plan is to sell a hundred units for a hundred and fifty thousand each. Given that game plan, you spend two million for the land. The exaction comes on. You want to pass it through to the homeowner. You can't. You can't pass it through at a hundred and fifty-one. If you could have done, you would have charged that price at the beginning. The development community are not philanthropists by nature. They're in the profit business. So you can't. A hundred and fifty's the most price. You can't pass it through. The only variable you've got that you control in development, you can't control all of the other costs of bricks and stuff that you've got. The only variable you can control is what you pay for the land. So you pay a hundred thousand dollars less for the land to accommodate the exaction. Now, that's how the market force works. And people say, "Well, they won't sell at one point nine because they want two million." Well, they'll never sell because you've changed the market forces on here. That's the point. So ultimately, this gets passed back. But I emphasize, it is important if you're going to do this that you give the development community a long lead time. By that, I mean eight to twelve months' lead time before you introduce the new requirements. Because otherwise, they're caught in the middle. And that means that their profit margin will suffer, and that's not right. You can't do that. Some people make this observation. They say, "We're going to reduce the number of new parks because we can't afford to maintain those we have. So we're just going to have lower standards and fewer parks, and we accept that because we can't maintain those we've got." The approximate principle, which is what I alluded to in my discussions this morning, is that parks, for the most part, if you're talking about passive parks, actually stimulate the value of properties around them, directs the premium generated by passive-use parks is sufficient to pay for the maintenance expense in some cases. And so you're really preempting the rights of future councils to make those decisions when you make a capital decision like that at the front end. And that really is challenging for a political body to adopt. So those are some thoughts, ladies and gentlemen, some initial thoughts, observations. And at this point, I would invite whatever comments, observations you may have, and we can discuss how we proceed here.
We have a microphone. So what we'll do is if you do have a question or a specific question, please, yes, I'll bring the microphone over to you. Just ask the question, and then we'll hear the response. I'll start it off, though, Dr. Crompton. One of the things that we have found is we have such a vital community that also has, even our nonprofits are developing, or you see within the housing community, from affordable housing. So how do you charge? Or is there any particular area in a community that you do not apply for, even though there are dwelling units?
I'm not following the question. I'm sorry.
More from the standpoint that you have the housing community within our affordable housing. So you may have a nonprofit developing part of the housing itself. Do you apply these types of fees to a housing community?
I don't have any magic. That's an elected official's decision. I mean, conceptually, you do. But if you feel that that's because, you know, what I'm saying here is it gets passed back to the land seller. It isn't passed forward to the homeowner. So conceptually, you do. And the nonprofit pays less for the land than it would have done if there was no exaction and it's sold at a lower price. So to me, that is not a problem. But, you know, at the end, that's an elected official's decision.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, please.
I think it's interesting, your last point, because...
It's interesting, your last point, because we've seen it in the market already. I mean, you know, the parkland dedication ordinance that's out there, it is lowering the price of land and slowing development because a developer cannot afford to pay X amount of dollars based upon the parkland dedication. And right now, the market is absorbing that extra cost. But there's friction out there in the community that it creates friction for these deals. Deals go up in smoke, so on. So at the end of the day, if it's twelve months ahead of time, you know, what can you do for the market to reflect that back on the land cost? Is there a easing into it? Is there a, in some cases on a multifamily deal, you're literally paying land cost twice.
And you've lost me in the last point.
Okay, so is there a way to ease in to this dedication fee? Because once you establish...
The ease-in position is the lead time that you, if you've already acquired the land, you're stuck. And it seems to me to be inappropriate to impose this on you because that's going to constrict your profit margin, and that isn't the basis you went into the deal on. That's not a reasonable way forward. So it seems to me, I've used twelve months as an arbitrary timeframe. I don't know what the land purchase lead time is in your community. But to me, that's the key to this thing. That once you go in knowing this ordinance is going to kick in, that's going to certainly impact the amount you're going to pay. Because at the end of the day, that's the only variable cost you've got to play with and all these other variables in there.
I've got the question, as it associates with the raising of taxes. As you acquire more land, you eventually get to a point where you've got maintenance that you've got to take care of. How do you avoid the increase in taxes? Because it seems like a delicate balance when you're looking for dedication fee versus land in lieu of.
And your point is well made, sir. And one of the things that most dedication fees have in now is a minimum-size land dedication. So in my own community, we don't take anything under five acres because the cost of O and M, when you're dealing with very small patches across town, is very expensive. To move crews around to these small patches is very expensive. And so one of the ways of handling that, sir, is to put a minimum size in the development that you won't accept anything under. In my case, in our city, it's five acres is our minimum standard. I guess that's the best that I can respond.